Hello, I'm Saucy Lomora with the City of McAllen. Welcome to your McAllen Minutes. If you missed the McAllen City Commission of May 9th, don't worry. Here's a brief recap of what was discussed. McAllen Mayor Pro Tem Joaquin JJ Samora called the McAllen City Commission meeting to order, and after the Pledge of Allegiance, District 3 Commissioner Omar Quintanilla gave the invocation. District 4 Commissioner Rudy Castillo was joined by McAllen Police Chief Victor Rodriguez and other McAllen Police Officers to help proclaim May 15 through the 21st as And now, a workshop of the McAllen City Commission. All workshops are open to the public in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. These workshops allow for detailed staff presentations.
Good afternoon, everyone. This time I'm going to call to order the workshop of the McAllen Board of Commissioners for March 27, 2023. Mayor Villalobos could not be in attendance today, so guess who's running the meeting? Not everybody come up at the same time. Very short meeting. So, Mr. City Manager, let's begin with item number one. Any questions to staff relating to today's regular agenda that is to be discussed at today's meeting? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item. Presentation and update by the Hidalgo County Drainage District Number One as it relates to the 2023 Drainage Bond Program. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the Commission, as you've probably read in the media, Hidalgo County is going out for a bond election this May, something that the City of McAllen has supported them in the past, and I hope that that's the message that we give the community, because it's very, very much needed. So, the county reached out to us and asked if they could come here and make a presentation to the City Commission, so we get the information that they're going to be putting out for the bond election. So, we have the Drainage District personnel, and they'll introduce themselves, and they've got a short presentation for us.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Sessin, good afternoon. Welcome.
Commissioner, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Roy. We appreciate you guys having us here today. So, just for the record, I'm Raul Sin, General Manager of Drainage District Number One. I do have Ms. Yvette Barrera, who you may know, one of my assistant GMs here.
You know her very well.
And Mr. Omar Saldua, another assistant GM that I have as well. I have Mr. Jaime Salazar, my Chief of Staff, and my Executive Assistant, Ms. Nora Cavazos, as well here. So, I'd like to say in far, I know the mayor gave us a hard time about Omar, and I told him he's just started working, mayor. So, I'd like to say the same for Yvette. No, maybe not. She was working here. Anyway, so again, we appreciate you having us here. So, what we want to do is just, we're doing, I guess, a district-wide tour of just educating the public on what this bond election is going to be. You know, in 2018, we had a bond election, and we had various projects, and we're going to go forward with a new bond election that the Board called in February of this year. February 2nd, I think is when they called for the election, so it's going to be on the upcoming ballot. So, just for the benefit of the public, the Board of Directors, it's comprised of the judge and the four commissioners. They do, we do our separate taxing body than the county. 2018 Drainage Project, we had 38, well, 37 projects, and the 38th one was an acquisition of equipment that we still are ongoing right now, district-wide. We've been putting projects out, and we are approximately about 50% under construction, 27 completed, and the other balance of 23. We call it under design. Some of those are still tied into some environmentals or clearances that we need from the state, and a couple of projects we're finishing design on, getting permits from ICBBC and things like that. But it's moving, I guess, as efficiently as we can get it to move, especially with right-of-way acquisition, things of that nature that happen. We do have Commissioner Gantu here as well. Yeah, come on.
Welcome, Commissioner. Join us.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Say hello.
Hi, everyone.
Good afternoon. No, I appreciate you being here, sir. Thank you. So, we are moving pretty efficiently. I know that the Board had committed on, within four years, get all the projects out to construction at the very least, and we're entering that fourth year, I guess, and 2019 is when the sale took place. We're in 2023, so I think we're moving at a very good pace, considering that we had to acquire a lot of right-of-way in some of these projects. So, they are moving forward, and will be completed here shortly. So, background, we have been, at the Drainage District, have been very assertive in our development of drainage projects district-wide, especially since 2015. You know, we created an in-house engineering department and an in-house construction department. It was more maintenance before, now it's both maintenance and construction. You know, we do have, obviously, the bond of 2018 that helps us get projects done more efficiently, and when we ever leverage funds, we're able to get projects done much faster. So, Commissioner Torres, come on.
Well, Commissioner.
Welcome in.
You would think we'd learn, our judge starts on time no matter what.
Yes. So, you know, and again, I guess, as I mentioned, you know, we have a lot of projects ongoing, and when we have that additional funding, we're able to expedite that construction. So, need, you know, we have a tremendous need in our county for drainage district-wide. We are focusing primarily on the major outfalls in this bond election. The previous bond election had some outfall improvements, but we're also focused on site-specific or area-specific. You know, we estimate over $2 billion worth of improvements district-wide that we need drainage-wise, so this is just an investment in that direction. The proposal, we're proposing to put out an election for $195 million, which is going to greatly impact our community, our area. As I mentioned, we do, this bond is primarily focused on the main veins. We call them the main drainage systems for our county. Tax impact, there is zero tax rate impact to the voter, to the resident of Hidalgo County. Zero tax rate impact. So, we've been able, through the Board's direction and my office, been able to manage the money that we have and the debt that we have, and the structure in a way that we were a little assertive in our paydown, and we're able to create that availability of funds, so we don't have to raise taxes to get $195 million bond issuance, which is a big, big thing, right? The proposed projects, we have 26 projects identified district-wide. As I mentioned, the majority of the projects are focused on the main drains that we have. You know, here in McAllen, we do have the former McAllen lateral that impacts directly. We have our Mission inlet that impacts directly McAllen. We have our Mission-McAllen drain that impacts as well McAllen. Up on the north side, we do have our West Main drain extension that impacts the growth in McAllen. So, there are projects in the main veins that do have an impact to McAllen and the surrounding area. This is just an exhibit showing the distribution of projects. You can see the red lines are the projects there. As I mentioned, they're lateral ditches. The advantage here that we have to the previous bond is this one, we have a lot of the right-of-way in place already, so it will help expedite if we are successful in this bond election. We'll move there efficiently to get plans developed and go to construction. Our hope is to start projects next year in construction, since the right-of-way is in place. Early voting, April 24th through May 2nd, and we have the Election Day Saturday, May 6th. So, we can advocate for or against, you know, the bond issuance. We just want to educate the public, educate the community, the importance of drainage and what we've been doing with it. We are going to have a dashboard set up for this bond election, if it is successful, just like we did for 2018. It talks about where the projects are, how much have been invested, everything very transparent, as far as the contracts with the engineers, contracts with the contractors, so the public can view and see where their tax dollars are being invested. So, that's pretty much what we have for our proposed 2023 bond projects. Any questions or anything? Commissioner Torres or Commissioner Gantu, would you like to add anything?
I'll wait for comments or questions.
Well, congratulations on working out this proposal for the drainage bond, where it's going to have a no tax rate increase to our citizens.
Correct.
I think that's terrific. I think that just goes to your budgeting and fiscal responsibility to our citizens, and we're proud of that, and we congratulate you with that.
Thank you.
Needless to say, I can hopefully speak for all our Board that this is a good program, a good proposal for not just McAllen, but for all citizens of Hidalgo County. You know, the valley and most of Hidalgo County, except for, you know, West Mission is pretty flat, so water will always find the lowest point.
Yes, sir.
And these programs and proposals that are being set forth are to mitigate those issues down the line, especially for home valuations and property owners in our county. So, we commend you.
Thank you.
Just to point to that, in 2018, we asked for three cents, went to the taxpayers and said we needed three cents to be able to pass the $190 million bond. Over the time, we ended up only needing less than two cents. So, they gave us the opportunity to use three cents. We only needed two for the $190, and so we're very excited that we can do this at no tax impact to our taxpayers.
A follow-up to that, Commissioner, the no increase in taxes, I guess, is associated with existing debt service runoff or being paid down? I guess what I'm asking is, do you see the same amount of debt service going forward? Is it because you've been paying off some debt?
Yes. Or? Yeah, we got into a very aggressive schedule of the previous bond, and because of that aggressive schedule, we're able to create the financing in place, so there's no impact. So, it's not going to jump up in two years or for anything else, it's going to go down.
Great. The other question I was going to ask you was about the Mission-McAllen drain.
Yes.
What does that project look like?
It's a north-south segment from three mile north where there's right-of-way in place. I believe your Dove extension is taking place there. We'll work with your engineering department and everything, we'll work with the Irrigation District Number One, where we have right-of-way, they have right-of-way as well. So, we're going to be widening that whole segment going north. So, that's a picture right here of our Mission lateral, and that's looking west from Benson Road, just north of 495, which is the beginning of McAllen, and then you go to Taylor, and it starts Mission. But that was the area that was heavily hit in 2018. You know, we had a lot of area, a lot of homes underwater. And the middle picture, as you can see, under construction, and then the picture to the right is actually Hurricane Hannah when it hit. And that's not a fully constructed system. We hadn't even fully constructed to the west yet, but you can see the, visually see the impact these projects are having, you know, and positive impact in our community, so.
Yeah, and I know you mentioned the dashboard. I think that's a good tool. Maybe I should have checked it before a couple of questions, right?
It's fine, sure.
That's a great tool for the public, right, to be able to kind of see.
Sure.
On the $190 million 2018 bond?
Yes, sir.
I was just curious, you know, there's a lot of changes over the last four years, especially since 2018.
Yes, sir.
Do y'all still expect to complete all 38 of the projects under the $190 million? How's the overall bond looking?
Yes, sir. So, the commitment is to complete all projects. There's 37 projects, the last one is an acquisition of equipment and so forth.
Yes.
Those projects will be fully completed regardless of the cost of escalating. If the district has to step in and finish the work, we will. But right now, with the model that we use, we split up projects into smaller bidding projects. Instead of bidding eight, $10 million projects, we bid in two, $3 million tranches, and that helped tremendously in keeping the cost very competitive, which right now our numbers look very good. So, regardless of, the projects will be completed, as I said. Regardless of what the cost comes in, if we need to take over and finish a project, we will.
Can you hear?
Yes, sir.
Actually, and thank you, thank you so much for you commissioners and Mr. Sessin for bringing this topic on the drainage bond. Drainage is being a big problem in Hidalgo County for a long time. And we all know the weather in the past years is not the same weather that we had in previous years. You know, the amount of water that comes down and the amount of time doesn't give the system enough time to get the water out. And these improvements I see in that are going to be critical. I mean, I see the North Main drain, I see the South Main drain, Raymondville drain. I mean, we know mostly of the water, I'm not saying all of the water, mostly of the water from Hidalgo County goes to those two drains, the south and north, and they carry all the way to the east and then out to the sea, right? So, those improvements are going to be very beneficial for everybody. It's going to carry the water, it's going to take it out, you know, as fast, so they cannot be inside, I mean, on the streets, as we know, water is the worst enemy of the street, and then traffic abhors. And then, of course, inside the homes of our residents. So, thank you, thank you. And with the no tax impact, that's a no-brainer. Appreciate it.
The only comment that I want to make is that after we build it, then we have to maintain it.
Yes, sir.
And that is a continuous
Yes, sir.
amount of money that's needed, essentially needed, without a doubt, because you have to maintain it. And I know you're addressing the dumping situation, because that puts clogs up a lot of the flow of the water going down or going east. So, it would be good for you to mention what you're doing about the dumping part of it, because that is a big issue, you know, for flow.
So, we do have a legal dumping program tied into the county as well. We do have 1-800 number also report the legal dumping, and we have forces on the ground daily, daily at the district doing the illegal dumping cleanup. And, you know, a lot of times they're tips, a lot of times our own shredding operations that we run district-wide point those issues out, and we have to address them. So, you know, the big thing here is trying to get something similar to what the city's having in the county, where trash can be collected, and I think that's a big step in the right direction. It's maybe not the fix-all, but step in the right direction. So, those are things that the county's looking at doing right now.
I know that the county's looking at a waste project.
Tony, Commissioner, people are going to think that I planted that question, but I'm going to follow up on that, because we're in our last final days trying to get. For everybody to know, rural residents in the county, only about 25% actually have a place where they're taking care of their trash. 75% of the people don't have any trash collection. So, where do you think that 75% is ending up? So, we're on our second legislative session to try to get a tax bill passed where we're able to do what you guys do, what every city does, and that is put a user fee on the water bill to be able to collect somebody's trash. And so, we're trying to get that, but it's been really difficult with our local reps. For whatever reason, we're not being able to, we haven't been able to convince them that it's something that we need. And so, if anybody wants to call your local reps, please help us, because it's not only going to help us. I mean, it's going to help all our drainage ditches. It's going to help everything that you see on the side of the road when you see a couch or a tire. That's all because nobody has a place to put this. And so, we're trying to bring something that everybody has. And I tell the state reps, you guys have trash cans, right? You have a trash can right outside your house, right, and you go and put your trash. So, take that away for a week and see what a big deal that is to be able to have trash right outside your house. We can't convince them. And we're at the last days of trying to get this thing approved. Nobody else in the state cares, right? They tell the state reps, you guys are the local people. If you want it, do it. But we can't convince our locals of how important this is. So, that's what I'm saying. It sounds like a softball you're throwing me, because I'm so frustrated with having to talk to the reps and not being able to get this done.
Well, I had heard about it, and that's why I wanted to bring it up, because that is, not only the start, but it's essential for the future to try to control that, because it's very hard controlling dumping in the rural areas. There's miles and miles, there's so many miles of it, and especially if you'll get into our drainage dishes, you know.
That's where it's at. I mean, that's why it's all in there.
I mean, you know, it defeats the purpose of bringing the water from the west to the east, you know, without a flow.
I mean, we still clean them up. They do a great job of cleaning them up.
But it costs money to do it.
Yeah, it takes time and effort.
So, if we could do a better, another way of eliminating it, you know, it'll help, you know, it'll help us all.
Yes, sir.
I do believe that this council is very supportive. We do need, drainage is a major problem, as we've seen it, and it's with growth. I will tell you, revenues are coming in, because developers are having to pay their fair share of drainage fees and also enlarge the ditches and getting more and more whitening of their ditches. So, I think it's an all-out effort by everyone, including the municipalities, but to help the rural areas. I commend you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Quick question, is your chief financial officer here?
Ms. Laura Rionez? No, she is not.
Could you have her send us the analysis of the financial impact, the tax rate?
Okay.
You know, we want to help you with information, and we'd like to put that on our webpage, if you would allow us.
Sure.
If you're showing 0% increase in tax rate, we'd like to put it out there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Sessin, for our viewers who are watching the workshop today, is there a website that our viewers can go to to get additional information on?
Yes, acdd1.org. We do have our website. We do have this information. It'll be up on our website. We have finally got the final polling locations today, so we'll have that put up as well. We'll have this flyer, the presentation, everything will be available on our website.
And this is a county-wide election, right?
It is. District-wide, you know, we cover 50% of the geographical area of the county, and we serve 90% of the populated area. So, the majority of the cities we cover, yes. We're going district-wide, educating the public so they can make an educated decision on this.
Very good, very good. Barring any further questions, Mr. Sessin, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Without saying, Commissioner Torres and Commissioner Gantu, we really appreciate you joining us for this workshop on this very important topic.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me vent.
All right, next item is the presentation regarding status of business grants.
Yes, sir. We've got the members of the chamber here. The City Commission requests that we get an update on how they've done the grants that we started for small businesses through the federal funds that we receive. They've done a great job, while they're sitting on, they've done a great job of serving our community, and I think we're getting close to the end. I think that's what you're going to hear today, and we've got some decisions to make as to whether we want to actually sunset the program or not.
Thank you, City Management and City Commissioners. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and get started. Looks like they're still looking for the presentation attachment on there. But as our City Manager mentioned, my name is Josh Mejia. I'm with the McAllen Chamber of Commerce. Next to me, we have Mr. Jorge Sanchez, who's also with the McAllen Chamber of Commerce, and we're going to go ahead and provide just a quick progress report on the McAllen Small Business Support Fund, which was provided back in 2022. Since then, we've received a total of applications of 567. Our colleague is going to go ahead and just kind of give a brief overview for those who may have forgotten what the status of the support fund is meant to do for the community as well.
Absolutely. So, this support fund is to help any business that is inside McAllen City Limits that has experienced some sort of losses from 2019 to 2020 due to COVID-19 pandemic. So, the first rules that we launched, we required that they suffered at least 20% decrease in gross receipts. After a revision, we were able to take that down to any type of losses from 2019 to 2020. And based on that, we received an extra amount of applications for our support fund.
So, the total amount that was awarded to the McAllen Chamber of Commerce was $4 million. Essentially, what the McAllen Chamber was tasked to do was process the applications and then be able to request a certain amount of funds from the city to be able to make out those checks. The application was, the intake process of the application started at the McAllen Chamber, and then through a vetting process that included the City of McAllen, we would go ahead and provide that approval and be able to disperse those funds. I hope that you guys have the attachment on your packet, even though we're having some technical issues here.
We do.
Excellent. So, we have a total of 242 approved applications. 318 of them were declined. You'll see a certain level breakdown of the applications and the amounts that were allocated for such businesses. You'll see an even much thorough breakdown of the business industries by sector and category, as well as some of the reasons why some of these applications were declined, and some of the non-qualifying business, part of the reasons as well as to why they were declined. In addition, we also generated a JIS map for those who wanted to know exactly where these businesses were located. Some of these businesses that applied were also Chamber members as well, so on behalf of the Chamber, we're also very grateful to be able to provide this support for businesses that originated during the time of the COVID-19 pandemic. We do have some time as well to be able to answer any questions regarding the program. I know that there has been a slowdown since the start of the application process. I know it was desperate times as well, where businesses were sort of waiting to see what kind of support local government would provide. It was a great program to begin with. A lot of businesses did benefit from it, but I think we are now at a different time of the pandemic, and we're now here to entertain exactly what this direction would look like moving forward as well. So, any questions regarding the program or the update of the program, we'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Okay, so, may I? So, I guess because you don't have the program, I guess there was $3,190 of the funds allocated? Is that correct?
So, the total amount that was received was $3,425,574, which a little over 3 million of those dollars were already expended through the application process. We did receive a check recently for the amount of $342,980, some of which has already been restricted through the application process.
I've got a chart here that's a little different.
So, the information on the packet was from information provided about 45 days ago, 60 days ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm providing up-to-date information as of the month of March.
So, I'm sorry, the total amount of funds allocated is $3.26 million.
So, the purpose was obviously to target those industries and businesses who met the criteria, who resulted in X percentage loss in sales, correct? So, the question to us is, is this a type of program that is still needed based on the objective and the purpose? Or do you see that maybe the purpose and objective could be redefined to allow these type of grants for startups? You know, I know, I don't want to go into this issue of having to redundancy, because if there's other programs out there that are doing just that... because if there's other programs out there that are doing just that, then obviously I don't, I don't, I think this would be more appropriate for a sunset. But, you know, I think we have funds like the lift fund, right? That, that might help with that. I'm trying to think of other funds that are out there either at the state or through the city that might. So my concern would be is not having to do what's already been done, right?
Absolutely. I, I do believe that this program has already served its purpose and we can see it in the initial trends in the presentation. So first month, we received two hundred and eighty-seven applications or so. Nowadays, we're receiving eight, five applications per month. So that amount has significantly go, go down. Of course, reuse of, of the funds for other startup allocations would be amazing, especially for us. That, that's our, 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 our bread and butter. We do that every, every single day. But we do need to keep into consideration that these are federal funds that need to go through the ARPA contract. So we need to know what type of parameters we need to have to play around with that.
I think J J hinted at it, you sounded it off. I think it sounds like it's probably right for sunset.
Yeah.
Set a closing date for a final application to be submitted. As we get more distant from, let's say, the economic event that this was, was to help, right? Not only post, it was sort of post pandemic kind of economic downturn, right? As we create more and more distance from that event, it sort of loses, I think, its initial intention for late, if we continue to allow applicants. I would be all for a sunset, right? We just set a date for the last application to be allowed to be submitted, whether that's forty-five days, sixty days.
If I'm not mistaken, the ARPA funds also had to be used up by a certain date. I don't remember if it's this year or next year, maybe twenty twenty-five.
It's the end of next year.
Next year, right? Okay, so I mean, I think that kind of speaks for itself in terms of, obviously, we're not going to do something that's contrary or illegal to what the act requires us to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could come up with another program that fits today's needs. So, yeah, I, I, I'm probably in favor of a sunset. If you, because you, you live it, you, you touch it every day. And that would be your recommendation also?
That would be our recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest takeaway is I think we're at a different time right now. The program is not necessarily relevant at this point with the way it's structured. So the recommendation of sunsetting the program would be right on the money.
Okay. Again, we, we can, we're going to go into a different budget meetings, you know.
How do we make, how's that decision made, Roy? If we want to sunset?
I, I think you would, you can make a recommendation today. We'll put it on the agenda for official action. I would suggest it be sooner rather than later, March thirty-one or April thirtieth.
I think at end of the month, end of the quarter.
April thirty.
April thirtieth.
And then so here we'll have to recalculate in order to make sure that we get that eligible. Because the way we made them eligible was that it was a, a, a use that was allowed directly. And so now we'll do the accounting that we did for the rest of the funding.
We could use it. Of course.
There's no requirement to publish notice as, you know, this is a drop dead deadline for applications. We're not taking any more.
I believe the wording that we used was that until the funds expire or the city of McAllen decided to.
Reallocate.
Right, but I think a thirty day, you know, April thirtieth would be good.
Yeah, I think so too.
That'll give people time.
And as, as, if I'm correct, there's no action or formal action required today, correct?
Correct. We'll bring it back on regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. McHale, Mr. Sanchez, for your time. Much appreciated.
Thank you. And it was successful.
Yeah.
It was very successful.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Going on to the next item, item number four, my favorite topic, introduction to modern roundabouts.
It's all right. Thank you.
Amandaza, Mr. Gonzalez, good afternoon.
Mayor Protemin, Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to present this topic. I'd like to introduce Renee Gonzalez. He's our transportation engineer. He's going to be doing the presentation today. What we're, what we're doing today is just kind of put a, an informational packet for you today so that we could talk about roundabouts, see if roundabouts is something that commission likes and would like us to look at further. We think there is a benefit to, to traffic circles when we put them in the right places. And we'll, I'll pass it off to Renee and, and let him do the presentation for you all.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Renee Gonzalez, I am your transportation engineer for the city. And I guess for years we've been looking at our department to see how we can get a more effective way of moving traffic to the city. As we're growing and it gets denser, we get more congested. And we're trying to find ways, alternative methods of trying to get traffic to move better east to west or north, south. Studying going to the roundabouts, I'm just going to briefly go through a synopsis and try to explain how, how they work, why are they so good? What are the benefits? And a couple of locations that we know that will, we will benefit as a community to have them. Can you go to the next slide? First, I mean, how do they work? There's a misconception on how these work. Basically, what it is, is a circular intersection and the roadways are narrowed and then they're tunneled into the intersection. What that causes is for the traffic to actually slow down, reduces the speed. It makes the driver to be more aware of the surrounding. Instead of like on an intersection, you continuously are looking up at an object. On a roundabout, as you approach it, you're actually looking at your surroundings, which makes you more aware. And that's one of the biggest benefits of it. It increases the capacity on the intersection because it makes the traffic to, to continuously move at a slower velocity. And the biggest benefit of it that we see in here is that driver awareness also brings awareness to pedestrians and cyclists. Can you go to the next slide, please? This is a traffic circle. This is not a roundabout. This is what we all have in our heads, a roundabout. Traditional traffic circles on big cities, old cities like Mexico City, France, London, they used to have as a point where people would gather to go to different locations. You'll come in in a horse or walking. So you come at a perpendicular facing the intersection or a perpendicular. So that right there causes a lot of congestion, confuses people. And a lot of people that are driving through these, they tend to have a, a misconception of what a modern roundabout is. So this is just, please, for the purpose of this, just try to erase this out of your memories and we'll move on with the new geometry. Can you go to the next one? Why they work, as I mentioned earlier, the roadway is designed in such a way that when you approach the intersection, there's something in the middle that makes you aware of the intersection. So it keeps you engaged. The other reason, the roadway is funnel and, and it turns into the roundabout and you let the traffic go through and it slows you down. And again, it keeps the motorist engaged in the traffic. It keeps the motorist aware of the surroundings and more importantly, increases the safety of what's around them. Next slide, please. The picture on the right is a regular intersection. The dots are potential conflicts in an intersection. The blue dots are conflicts in which the risk is high for a serious injury or a potential fatal crash. The orange and green are more of an impact that is a convergence, which means the car hits to each other on the side or diverging, which, which means pushing each other on the side. If you look at a, a regular intersection, you have about thirty-two points of impact. And right in the middle, you see the impacts that are, that can have a, a serious injury on them. On a roundabout, since you're always going the same way as you enter it, the potential hits are always on the side. You are never going to encounter a car or an automobile head on. So that reduces the risk of a potential fatality. Also, as you can see, there's only eight conflict points in the actual intersection. And it's at a low speed. Again, you come in at a low speed. When you're in a, in a highway and you're about to exit into a ramp, there's a section that we call the weaving lane, meaning that's where automobiles weave between each other. On a highway, we're going about sixty, seventy miles per hour and they're designed for that. In a roundabout, it's about the same concept, but in a circular manner, at twenty-five, thirty miles per hour or less. Now, right as of today, in the state of Texas, the second highest mortality rate is high speed and distraction combined. High speed, meaning not going a hundred miles or more, but it could be on a thirty mile per hour facility, if you're going forty-five, you're going over the limit. When you approach an intersection like this, you're forced to reduce the speed above the limit or lower. So that means you're already in control of the automobile and you have enough vision to see what's around you. Go to the next. This is an example of the type of crashes on an intersection. Regular intersection also has this type of crashes, which is the convergence ones. But the most potential with the highest risk of the fatality are the, the actual T-crash that we all know of or in a left turn. On a roundabout, this is the type of, the most typical type of crash that you have. Now, in a study that was done by the Federal Highway Administration, they grabbed round of intersections that were retrofitted with roundabouts and they studied the accidents before and the accidents after. And these are the results. On all types of crashes, on intersections with stops, it reduced by forty-four percent impacts on automobiles. On signalizes, forty-eight percent. The following one, which is fatal or, or injury crashes, it reduced by seventy-six percent on stops and sixty percent on signalized intersections. This is a study that was done in two thousand and ten by the Federal Highway Administration. Next one. On a combined study between the Federal Highway Administration and the, and the insurance safety of highway insurance, they came out with something similar. But the one that really struck me the most was the fatality was reduced by ninety percent. On intersections that were retrofitted with, with a roundabout or a newer roundabout was introduced into it in urban areas. Next one. We do, there's a large reduction on delay of moving of traffic. When you get to a stop sign, we all go through that. We're rushing somewhere, we stop in a, between a minute or two minutes in an, in an intersection with a signal. And as we move, we accelerate to catch the, the next light on green. We create more congestion, we delay more. On intersections that have this type of alternate methods and you have several of them, you're moving to and through slowly while you're moving and you're not causing any delays safely and slower. Next one. For pedestrians and cyclists, the blue dots that you see in there are the potential hits for the pedestrians and, and cyclists. On a regular intersection, you have sixteen conflict points. The most dangerous one is the one to the right. And I think everybody has experienced it on Second Street where you're driving and somebody on the walking trail. You're paying more attention to the traffic on their side as somebody's crossing and you don't see them until you're there. That is the most common one. On a roundabout, you either see them prior to approaching the intersection. As you're approaching, you will see them face on. And as you come in, you will see them further in, but you will, your automobile will fa, will be facing the crossing. It will not be next to you. So you have a broader vision to the spectrum to see who's crossing, who's not. Now cyclists do drive inside, but they're protected. Next one. These are, in McAllen, there's only two roundabouts that are in a major roadway, well, collector roadways. We have one at the, uh, Tres Laios on Cherry Road and Tres Laios Boulevard. And we have the one in Wisconsin and Main Street. This is Wisconsin and Main Street when it's at full capacity with the school, with the school drop off. Uh, we recorded this and the line, the queue was all the way to Vicentennial, rush hour. And there was two cars moving through the roundabout safely at a low speed. And there was pedestrians crossing. We have a, an actual drone video that I go and see it.
Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yes.
We have a posted meeting at four forty-five in just a few minutes. If I could just.
All right, I'll, right, I have two more slides.
Thank you.
The other two are for my line and Holy Spirit and Savannah Avenue, very small ones. There are more for traffic coming. And in the intersections that we're looking at, we have a, in, uh, can you go to the next slide? Doesn't want to go. There you go. We have a project right now and, and we, we're developing plans for the widening and extension of Thirty-third Street. It's going to be connecting to Oxford. If you look at Oxford, it's very close to some other intersections. It makes no sense to have a traffic signal there. So we're proposing to have a roundabout in there. It's a very dense residential area that we can move traffic through there. The other one is on Auburn and Twenty-Ninth Street, which is the southeast corner of where the baseball park is. But also because of proximity to the existing intersection on Trenton and other intersections, it's a, it's a perfect location for one. The other two locations we have is one on the Wilday Avenue and Benson Road on the south side of McAllen. It's out there in the middle of nowhere. It's close to the highway, it's close to smaller intersections. Having a to and through in there will be safe and gives you the vision also. And lastly, we have one in Wisconsin and Second Street, which many of you are familiar. And this one is probably one of the most important ones because of the running route. It's offset. There's close proximity to the subdivisions in there. It has some areas there that are uncomfortable when you come in and approach them. But as far as the cyclists and pedestrians, you'll have a better visibility and it will move the traffic now. The good thing about this one is that we have the one in Wisconsin and Maine. People are used to it, they know how to drive through it. So connecting between Edinburgh and the baseball park should be faster if we have a roundabout in here, so. Any questions?
Well, given the kind of short timeframe we have, Mr. City Manager, maybe we can.
Yeah, we'll bring the proposals individually.
Very good.
So the city commission can evaluate it.
And as far as the remaining items, we can.
We'll bring them back.
Back in another workshop.
Very well.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
With that, we'll have to postpone the remaining items and we will adjourn this workshop. We do have.
This concludes the workshop of the McAllen City Commission. Workshops are held every second and fourth Monday of the month, convening at four P M. At the McAllen City Commission Chamber on the third floor at McAllen City Hall.